Yeah, but didn't come up here. We'll try it. Okay, roll call.
Yes. Robel. Robel, Stratton, here. Keaton. Jacobson.
Here.
DeYoung.
Here.
Peltonen, here, Milnick.
Here.
Okay, and we started at seven.
Seven o'clock.
Seven o'clock, okay. Alright.
Alright, is there a declaration of a conflict of interest pertinent to this agenda item? None noted?
None.
Public comment. Any person should be permitted to address the meeting of the PC. Public comments shall be carried out in accordance with the calling rules and procedures. Analysts will be directed to the PC with questions directed to the chair. Any person wishing to address the PC, they'll speak from the lectern or use raise hand feature on Zoom if you can hear me. Please state his or her name and address. Persons may address the PC on matters that are relevant to the township planning and zoning issue. No person should be allowed to speak more than once on the same issue or matter, excluding the time needed to answer PC members' questions. Public comment should be limited to three minutes per person. Do you like to speak, sir? Okay, when there's nobody on Zoom, correct? Oh, there is somebody on Zoom.
Wendy.
Alright. Does anybody in Zoom want to make a public comment? No hands?
No hands.
Alright, moving on. New business zoning amendment number eighty-eight.
Okay.
Take it away.
I thought I would put some material on the power plant, it would be easier for us to see. Bill Moose. That's not it.
Us?
We had to talk about it.
Don't shoot it, Mike. Okay, so. Okay, so this topic really begins with discussing amendment number sixty-nine, which was done in two thousand seventeen. And it also relates to the observation that our clerk, I mean our zoning administrator made it till the end of the last meeting about the absence of the requirement about section five eleven, fifteen eleven rather, distance of septic systems, systems from any body of water. I'm going to go through exactly how this happened, but basically we have the the printed old ordinance that everybody got in their binder that shows the two sections fifteen-ten and fifteen-eleven in that. And a new ordinance, which is the title slightly different, but it's the same language as what we had in fifteen-ten. So when Deb brought that up at the meeting, we had some, we had some conversations earlier that day about it. I said, how did that happen? And so what I went back to was some of the material that we started with when we worked on the zoning clarification project and that was going to the manuscript that was provided by Unicode. And this is the doc, this is what they had in their deliverable, which was looked like this. And they, they reference amendment number sixty-nine adopted in two thousand seventeen. But there is no fifteen-eleven, so, so that's when I was working through it, I, I started with this, it was easy, easiest to cut and paste into the new document. So, so that's, that's part of the answer here. The other thing I went back and found was the process by which amendment sixty-nine started. It started with the planning commission, and Mike, you might remember this because it was two thousand seventeen, where a public hearing was held in May, May, May two thousand seventeen, and they had proposed deletion of section fifteen-eleven, fifteen-twelve, and fifteen-thirteen. I don't know what the other twelve and thirteen were, but, but they were, those sections were, all three were deleted. I didn't see anything to the contrary and left it as, as it was. When it got to the town board, however, the, the town board made a motion to have fifteen-eleven back into this requirement. So that's why it appears there. So with a little bit of back and forth going on, there's the minutes that are available that, from that board meeting that describes what happened and, and why I kind of confused there. In looking at that though, we've had some other conversations about that specific requirement and that led me to look into this a little bit more and I want to share with you some some other facts to consider about fifteen-eleven. And I looked around at other townships and saw what, what they have and what I could tell this was just the last couple of days. Looking at East Bay, Acme, Milton, Clearwater, Elk Rapids, and none of them have anything like this. Most of the ordinances are silent on the topic of where septic systems can go, or they simply reference the county health department regulations. I also wonder in my mind, and I've not talked with Deb about this much, but I think it's doubtful this requirement's been enforced in my water township in the past. I don't know if the township has had an active role in reviewing sewage systems in, in the township. I mean, there's a, there was that scandal by the county health department. And we're left with a one sentence standard that seems rather vague and raises some questions. So that, this is all things for us to talk about here as we go through this. And then finally, I was looking at this number of a hundred feet and also recognizing that the language says any water body, and it says that basically your septic system would have to be a hundred feet from any water, from any water body. So it doesn't really define whether a water body is a lake, pond, ditch, creek, whatever, if there's no explanation for that. The other thing I realized after looking through this more was that most of what we have fronting lakes and rivers and creeks and so forth is zone R1.
Yeah.
And those lot size requirements are one hundred feet of frontage and two hundred feet of depth for twenty thousand square feet. So if you look at that circle there, that's a hundred foot radius and you compare that to an R1 lot, you see there isn't a lot of room in there for compliance with that requirement if you put in the minimum size lot required in. So there's that. And then I also wanted to, and I gave everyone a copy here of the health department regulation for the septic tanks. And this is, everyone has a copy of this, about one page included in the rule by which the health department approves septic tanks. And you see the fifty foot requirement from any well. And then also the fifty foot spacing from any lake, pond, creek, or other surface water. They want highest floodplain elevation, which that's another dimension because we have a fair amount of floodplain land in Whitewater Township. Yeah. And I wonder how they implement that. So anyway, then also five feet from any foundation wall or canopy from any lot line. So there's a lot of county requirements that it follows. I think the intention was we wanted to be stricter than what the county requires in an effort to control and protect water quality around lakes and creeks. But I'm starting out for consideration that that seems to be problematic in my mind in terms of how that's implemented, how that's done. I wonder how it's been done in the township in the last few years. Or even before that, because it was in there prior to two thousand seventeen, so it would have had to been in there a long time. I didn't go back and research how long. So so the question is, where does that leave us here? You know, we can leave the ordinance as is and revisit it with more facts and analysis later, or we can approve, provide a draft amendment, advertise for a hearing on April second, hold the hearing, make necessary edits onto the township board. We have a little bit of time for more research into this, maybe wording can be improved somewhat. But that's, that's where we are with this.
I want, just for my clarification, the fifty foot the, you want a discussion on the fifty foot versus the hundred feet?
Well, it's fifty feet now, as required by the county.
And then, but what, what's the hundred feet? Where did that come from?
That came from Whitewater Township. That got in there
and, yeah.
I think, I think, I'm guessing I wasn't involved then, but I'm guessing that they realized that that was a problem and unworkable and probably hard to enforce. And proposed to eliminate it. The town board at the time said, no, we like that.
Yeah. Yeah, because I re, I remember seeing that when I was doing the site plan review for the campsite, the Glamping, the Glamping campsite, because there's the, the creek, the creek that ran through it. And I was looking at a hundred feet from that and it, you know, I was looking at like, how do you decide exactly what size of waterway that, that, that it would apply to as well? So.
I think, um, as it was written, I think it would be hard to enforce.
I, uh, we had a TV variance request for a lot of the north end of the park road that's in between the road and Williamsburg Creek. And if you had a hundred feet from the creek, you'd be on the other side of the road. Uh, and when I got to the variance, I had to do with adding onto the just, you know, six hundred square foot log cabin and being close to the road. When I got there, I, I walked around and it's really rocky in order to exist. Drink field was, but made up on the wall was, I'm sure you was the health department approval of the new, a new septic system. And it was kind of a high tech thing. It, there was no way that you could apply this hundred feet. I'm not sure if this would have worked in in that case, but we got there, there, there was only a pool, so I said, well, you know, I think it's close to a stream, but the high, the, the health department approved it. So, you know, we, we approved the other things. When we built our, our new home in two thousand, uh, on that, we built the new septic system ninety-eight or ninety-nine. And I didn't have any choice on it. The health department came out and said, here, here, and I attended it. So I don't know why we would want a hundred foot requirement. I'm pretty surprised it was pushed down a lot more to ZVA meetings.
How would it be enforced? I, I don't know. That's why I raised the point. I don't know how it's been enforced. If it's been enforced by the township, this is what you know, I know. Are we going to override the health department?
Well, in, in the health department, if they approve it, how do we even know?
They can approve it, but we, our township has different, you know, more regulations. It could be stricter than the county. I, I believe that's correct, right? Have you?
I think so.
Yeah, so.
But we don't have an enforcement part of it, so.
Well, not towards.
Well, isn't there, when, is there no site use permit required?
What?
The, the site use permit requirement, wouldn't it come up there?
If it were the same as family home, there wouldn't be a site plan. I mean, there would be plans divided to to Deb or the zoning administrator to
Right.
you know, approve the plant, approve the house, for example, approve that it's set back from the property lines the way it's supposed to be and make sure it's not too, up too tall, meets the envelope.
But it doesn't show the, the septic field necessarily or?
I don't, I can, I'm trying to think when I built my house, I don't, the health department came out afterwards, I think. I had the ability to do it, so I don't know, I'm using that, but I don't.
Definitely. That would be part of the aspect.
They had, they come out and approve the location. Then, then there's a question too about the tank versus the leach field, you know, which are two different components.
Because the tank can be at fifty feet. And based on my reading of what we had in there, it sounds like the tank could be at fifty feet, but the field, you know, the subsurface drainage had to be a hundred feet away. That's how I would interpret it. But it is, I mean, it's vague enough that it's open to interpretation. I guess what, my, my point is, is couldn't we change the requirements for the drawings that are turned into dev if we want to be able to enforce it so that the septic field needs to be shown on with the drawings? I mean, that would be one way of making sure that, that, you know, she's getting to see it if we're going to make it, if we're going to continue to have it be more strict than the county.
That sends here some surface disposal disposal system. Now look, most of your tanks are underground.
They, but the, I'm looking at the, the definitions in that, that Randy gave us from the county and they, they have two separate definitions. They have the tanks and they have the disposal system.
My point is, we don't.
Do we not? Are we sure?
It's, this is every subsurface disposal system.
Right.
It doesn't.
Which is, that's, so the county has that, but then they also have the tank, so they have a definition for each thing. We're not looking at definitions.
Well, I'm looking at what ours says that according to this, the tank would have to be a hundred feet away also because it's subsurface.
It depends on how, how we've written the definition.
There's what we did.
If we have a separate definition for a septic tank versus the subsurface disposal system, then it's two different things.
But that's the county. That's us.
But, but that's not a definition. That's the ordinance.
It is, yes. But what is the definition, our definition out of the subsurface?
That's romantic. I don't know.
Same here. That's what I mean. We're on the same page. What, what are any differences?
I don't know if we have a separate one.
Well, our amendment could include definitions, you know, if, if you want. That's why I put in there, leave it as is or approve it. Prove the amendment. They have to get the ad in the paper in the fifteen days. You've got to put it down to improve on the language if that's, if that's where we want to go. And that, in my mind, that would include definitions and, and perhaps more clearer description of what a water body is. I mean, is it a road ditch?
Right.
I mean, is it, uh, a creek? Is it, what is it? I mean, that's awfully broad.
Yeah. The thing I keep thinking about is that in our master plan, we talked about, you know, maintaining the quality of our area, right? Including the, the lake and, you know, waterways and things. And so
Yeah.
I can, I can see why the board might have wanted fifteen-eleven, you know, to stay in there, particularly, I know, like on Elk Lake, they're trying to keep people from putting septic, septic fields between houses and the lake.
Yeah.
They want them, you know, on the roadside of the house.
Right.
And, and so, you know, that's, that's the only thing I'm considering.
So just for background information, Darryl, the county commissioners was here at the meeting. This week and talked about the fact that the county is likely moving forward with the subject and inspection process where within, if you're within, I think it's three hundred feet of the, of lakes and you sell your house, so there'll need to be an inspection on your septic system before you can transfer it.
Yeah.
That, that's moving forward, as I understand it, at the county level. So.
I think, I, I just, I'd like to clarify this. When you were top, when you first started, you put up the picture of the lot size and then the circle of the hundred foot radius. Um, weren't you saying that if we allow somebody to build a house on the smallest lot size that's allowable? That, that we're, that really don't have the ability to put a septic tank on it under this rule?
No, I'm just making, I'm just showing the relationship between what a minimum size R1 looks like and a hundred foot separation. So that, that circle, this is the scale, even though it's still there, it's just, um.
But it's a, it's a little misleading because, because the water's only on one side, right? And so the hundred feet is, you know, for instance, and I don't remember, what, what's the setback from the water for the house?
Um.
A hundred feet is what our, our ordinance says?
No, for the house, not the field.
Oh.
So it's, it's the, well, these, these are garages, right? So that means the water's probably over here.
Yeah.
So, so you have to be, you know, you have to be a hundred feet back. So that means your septic field has to occur somewhere.
Yeah.
Back here. But the house.
It's a hundred, hundred feet in high water, right?
Right, yeah.
So, you know, that could be even.
Right.
Right.
It's gonna be.
Right, it's gonna vary. But the, but the surveys I think are usually, aren't they, doesn't the survey usually go to the high water? No? Okay.
I don't know.
Anyway.
I thought lakefront probably, probably was actually right in the block.
Oh, oh, most of it, I think does. You have that repair, repairing rights.
Right.
But I don't think you're.
But that's kind of my point is if the house needs to be set back a certain, whatever the distance is from the lake, then you put a house there, is there
room for the field?
For the field on the backside of the house.
Right.
Um, if it's the smallest lot of, of possible.
Yeah. Which is a hundred by two hundred.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. And, and I know that just from, just from talking to people, they have their, the mound tank, most of them, you know, if they have to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Bounded.
Mound is the.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they, they have that right up by the road. Uh, because they had to, but I know people who have, they didn't have a ten foot setback on their septic field and it's under someone else's property.
No.
And so when they drive over it with their tractors, they can't, it's their land, but it's, you know, not good for their septic field.
Right.
Um, and it creates a lot of problems. So I noticed that there's a ten foot setback from uh, the lot lines on Grand Traverse County. And that would give people a little, I mean, a little bit of grace, but uh, because they didn't have, uh, uniform regulations or they didn't look at them or whatever, I, I know people who have their septic field right up next to the other person's lot line and they always have discussions about it. I'll say discussions, okay? And this, if we come up with something reasonable, then when people, if, when your septic field goes bad and you're on the lake, most, most of the time you have to put a mound in, I think, to bring it up to code. I'm, I'm just saying, but I'm not on the lake, so. Um.
I guess I would just like to point out that um, the county health department already has an ordinance in place. Um, most other townships agree with that ordinance. And I think for us to try to to almost double that without having a background of knowing of what exactly that does.
Mm-hmm.
And what, how much more work that's going to find out? And whether we can even enforce that.
And go to the CVA.
Yeah, and then with the CVA problems and that.
Yeah.
It seems like we would just be giving ourselves more headaches.
Yeah, we do. And, and the ZVA is going to approve a variance on everyone because the owner didn't create the problem, the township did. So I see there's no point in putting that in our ordinance.
Well, thank you, Carl, because that makes sense there.
Yeah.
I'm just telling you the facts.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just the facts.
Just the fact.
I'm not positive because, well, when this in seventeen, I was very new to this, but I know over the years, there's many times when, uh, the discussion has gone to the, the, uh, the county comes in and the county's in control of this, not us.
Right.
A lot of times that's what we've done is leave it to the county because they're, that's their job. So, and, and I'm not saying that's why we took it out, but in a lot of, in a lot of conversations, as I can recall, that was the topic, that's, that was the direction of the conversation.
Of the planning commission?
Yes.
Right? But we don't know why the board decided to put it back in.
Whether we.
Well, knowing who, what the board, what, what, the way the board was operating at that time, uh, you can pretty well guess.
Um, okay. So the, so the front and rear yard setbacks are, just so that we've got all the information, the front and rear yard setbacks for R1 are thirty feet.
Yeah, I have a, maybe I can pull this up here.
Wait, is there a copy of the zoning ordinance that's on the counter, on the table over there?
I've got one here.
Oh, okay. You can look.
But I have the, um, you're kind of better at sketching than I am.
I would suggest that.
Oh, yeah, it's thirty and thirty from rear, fifteen on the sides. So whenever I'm looking at lot size requirements, I always kind of do a graphic like this to show.
It's a setback for a moose.
Yeah, anywhere he wants to be.
Uh, Mike, I guess, well, I'm sorry, I can't get it to show me. Got something.
So.
Kind of blow up in that, but I can tell it's thirty feet front, thirty feet rear, fifteen on the sides.
Mm-hmm. And, and the lot size would be one hundred by two hundred. So, um, the one hundred would be the waterfront.
And when it says high watermark, does that mean will you actually see the water or is that the high watermark on the land and?
Yeah, there's a mark on the bank, the water has been.
There's a definition.
Yeah, there is a definition for that and, and basically.
Oh, yeah.
I. You can see where it's been at some time. It might not be there now.
So that's what's considered the high watermark.
Yes.
I can't, I can't, I can't, we're in town, the state, which is far more detailed, there's, there's, and it it's a point on the bay or shore at which the presence and action of the water is so continuing that it leaves a distinctive mark either by erosion, destruction, terrestrial vegetation or easily recognized landmarks. That's our township, but, and it's also, I think, pretty much the same for East Bay. Uh, along the other side, the same way, this far more detailed. Uh, a lot of conditions, that's right.
I mean, you know, like a lot of times when the water is high, when I was a kid, hanging out with my dad on websites, they're all, they're all talking about the high watermark, the high watermark. Looking around and say, well, what are you talking about? Where is high watermark?
Yeah.
Well, at that point in time, the water was there at the high watermark. Well, I've lived long enough now to see the water recede and come back. So it, it is, it's an ever-changing thing.
Right.
But the mark is there. You know, like those houses on Miami Metro, they're in high watermark. They're, that's fake land. That, that watermark was behind where the road is now.
Oh, really?
Yeah. They, they pumped that sand out of the bottom of the lake. We made that.
Alkalate is controlled, uh, by the dam.
Yeah.
Higher in the summer and lower in the winter. Yeah, about eight inches to, uh, minimize. The drainage control.
Well, for myself, I don't see a reason why we would have to put this back in now. The county township, or the county already has a rule, correct? And if we're going to put it back in, I think we should do a lot more homework on this. Um, because if we're gonna extend that another fifty feet and possibly, um, and then do issues with citizens that want to, you know, build near the water, we should have a good reason why we're doing that. Randy, what's your feeling on it? Do you feel that?
Well, I sympathize with the idea of trying to protect the water quality. That's why I got planning in the first place, because I thought there was, there's a relationship between development and quality. And I think the, the, this amendment or this provision was well-meaning and well-intentioned, but that was always into details and this kind of stuff, and I don't know how in the world a small township with wet water is going to enforce that. That was always into details and this kind of stuff, and I don't know how in the world, small township or wet water is gonna enforce that. And I got with it, yeah.
I had one today with. And uh, he had to put in a new septic system and uh. He has a big plane out there where he thought you you could have put some two hundred feet away. The problem is the water table is high. And uh, the the county came in, told him what he had to do, and it's got filters in it. It's got a monitoring system where he has to pay a guy, a yearly salary. Uh, to monitor it, see if there's any problems, and that costs thirty thousand dollars. And I asked, and I said, well, you got that big yard, why couldn't you just put it way over there, you know, under yards away? And he said, because the water table, they can attest to it. And. I don't know if he had another choice or not, but that was dictated by the county, so. I don't see any reason for us to make anything more strict than the county, because. More often than not, there's some blocks on the way they're configured and the water table and everything else that. Uh, like I said, when I looked at that property, I down Kirk Road. So where the world are you gonna put it? They they have a whole specification on their. Uh, type of system we have to have, so. I I I just don't see it.
Yeah, I I don't know how many waterfront lots are left, because uh. Uh, you know, I I I really, I only know of a couple, um. And I don't even, they're just barely in our township, almost to Antrim, um, and. So I I think the concern is more about the waterfront property, because usually other, our sea is five acre minimum.
Oh, yeah.
Um. Ag ag is one acre minimum. I think that there's enough land, it's just more of the. Of the waterfront property, that that this would be um. You know, affecting, because we're not gonna say to people who've already had their home there for a hundred years, like, you know, now you have to. Uh, move the septic field. I mean, if it's failed.
Yeah, once it failed.
If it's failed, you have to move it um, into compliance, but just to say you have to move it, and the new builds. I don't know, I mean, it seems like the. The um, the zoning administrator would be the person, the point person with the construction code people. That would determine, you know, where the septic field goes, I, there there's there's gotta be some communication.
I I think it's the, I think it's the county determines where it goes.
Where it can go.
Yes, they typically make the site visit. To go out there and look at the site, see where, and then there's other things, the the separation between the septic system and the well.
Yeah.
Not being awful thing.
And and they do a perk test, right?
Yeah.
And that's how they figure out the waters, the water tables.
And they're, yeah, and they're doing it by their their code, they're not doing it by the township code. By their standards, so our zoning administrator would be the one that would have to say. Great location, except it has to be like a hundred feet for, you know, not fifty feet more. But I don't think our zoning administrator has ever done that, because it's like. Uh, ever.
It's like Carl said, if it would go to the C D A, they would probably get in the way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it's. Yeah, I I would be more worried uh, about small lot, I either. Not on the the lake, because you don't have a choice. I mean, I, my next door neighbor has the mound.
Yes.
I know, because they dug down twelve foot in the sand, and then my next door neighbor doesn't have a mound. Uh, because we put new ones into it, huffing up, you know, near the road. And uh. Yeah, like I said, I didn't have a choice and didn't have a choice. I don't know if there's a choice on where the new well went or not, but they'd come over and told that my builder where to go.
Yeah.
I I wasn't really here at the time, uh, who knows, when they had those meetings, but. You know, that's my impression that. They're gonna tell you where it's gonna be, and if you try to put it somewhere they don't like, you're gonna be in trouble.
Oh, yeah.
Well, at this point, does anybody here feel that we need to move ahead and try to get this put back in at this time?
It, there was a reason. That it was, we had this special meeting at this time.
So if we wanted to put it back in, we could do so quickly, we wouldn't be. We wouldn't be waiting till April to have this discussion, then into May for a public hearing. And action by the board in June.
Yeah.
You know, because.
It takes a hundred twenty.
Takes time, so that's why we saw a window to have this special meeting, to have this conversation and um, if if you. Planning commission felt it ought to be back in there. Then you can do that more quickly.
Was was there a need of uh, I thought there might be a a a need that for us to have this decided. For the the zoning administrator?
I think there was confusion, because because it it was um, in the old one and not in the new one, and so she, so she, that's why she brought it up.
I I talked to her this morning, picked up this, and she's got a land division that's trying to be done. And part of it is right on water and uh, it's narrow and the and the whoever's. As I understood, whoever's asking for the land division, wanting her to get permission for the septic system. Before they make the land division, you know, and I don't think she's comfortable with that, because ordinance is kind of clear.
Yeah.
Is is what I understood from the conversation.
Me too.
So if I did, just to carry on farther, if if the proposed lot is large enough and meets the one hundred, it meets twenty thousand square feet. Is she saying she would not approve that lot split because of the land division, because? Of the septic tank requirements? We don't really know where the septic tank might go.
Go, right, yeah, I I didn't, I don't think the conversation went that far that I was clear, um, okay, how she felt about that.
What I understood, you know, is the reason we had this meeting is if we did want to put it back in. We need to do it quickly because of these other things that are coming up, and it would be hard if we waited later. If we were planning on putting this back in as it's stated. When these other land divisions might pop up and then there might be an issue. So I think it's either, if we wanna put it in, we need to put it in now as it's written. Or if we wanna look at it later, maybe write it better. If that's really what we want.
I think Deb's in a difficult place, because she's got this, a land division that meets the twenty thousand square feet, probably meets the frontage. You know, I don't know, does she have a set of house plans yet for that that lot?
I I don't, that didn't come up, but it didn't sound like it.
It it didn't sound like it to me either, so if you don't have a house plan, you don't know how many bedrooms, you don't know how many, how big the septic system has to be, you don't know. You know, a lot of that, you don't, so. It it's hard to. Make a decision based upon the one sentence we have there.
Yeah, and and.
If if we don't wanna put that back in. Is there any, do we have to make a motion to that effect, or since it's, no, I didn't know, we just.
I think we just don't take actions, just don't take action.
We just don't.
But it's, I think it's, I think the special meeting was is great, because we got a chance to have their conversation, and now we can. Now we're clear on whether, you know.
I wasn't sure on why I either.
I'm very glad we did, because I totally understand it now.
Yeah, uh.
The thing about uh, and I don't know so much about in this township, I don't work in this township very much, but I work on water a lot. And a lot of these older small houses that were, that were very common.
Yeah, the old.
Are disappearing.
Yes, the cottages.
Yeah, they're just, they're just plain disappearing. People buy the lot, they have no intention of keeping the house. They're cleaning it down and have been built their own house. So uh, these smaller places where these things will be unchecked for all these years, they are disappearing.
Yeah.
So this, in the in the looking forward of what's happening and going to happen in our township. Is is the real focus.
And and the what would happen if they forced it a hundred feet back from the water on a two hundred foot lot? Um, and you know, probably they would have a smaller home, they wouldn't build the the McMansions.
Right.
And, you know. No, no judgment, but that might be a consequence, but the the smaller hundred by hundred and twenty, that is that possible?
Yeah, I forget what zoning district that is, but there's each one of them, there's reductions in lot sizes if there is uh, water or sewer. Available. If you don't have septic system, you can have a smaller lot, I forget.
Do we have water and sewer?
Well, we have.
In in that one, the one housing development right here, I call it housing development, Millbrook.
Yeah, and then doesn't uh, Miami Beach have a system?
Yeah, they, yes, they got it, yes.
Well, they call it ham too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think they were all running into problems down there, and but they just couldn't re-put it back in there. And some of those systems were, uh, when they were put in, uh, there were some dirty deals done. Uh, from from the, from the rumors I heard as a as a young man and a kid from the trade, my dad was a carpenter. Uh, we lived right next door to the phone guy, uh, you know, and in those days, like the carpenter was the electrician and the plumber.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of sketchy things that happened, and not just on Miami Metro, but along the way. Like Carl said months ago, uh, when some people do their laundry, we're not seeing the soap suds in the water anymore.
Right.
But you down further in Elk Lake Road, there's a big hill that goes way up and. Years, quite a few years ago. As I understand it, the, let me say, I think the D N R, they made arrangements with the owner of that property there. To put their septic fields up there.
Yeah.
So you gotta pump up a hill and think, gotta, hope that helps us break.
My whole end is Elk Lake Trail, the septic fields are on the other side of the road. So they're they're far away from the lake, and it's because the water table is high.
Yeah, and and. Another option, the only, I I, my only option my friend had over in um, the river. Was to have a pump out system was the other option, and you don't want that, so he opted for the thirty thousand dollar system.
Does everybody feel at this point that they've uh, they can make up their mind whether or not we are gonna either make a motion or. We're not gonna make any decisions tonight on this? Or is there any more deliberation?
I think the only question I give is if we want to um, clarify, and maybe this is something that needs work done with the definitions. In terms of, you know.
Yeah.
Waterways and all that sort of stuff, but otherwise I'm uncomfortable.
Leaving it at fifty feet, but which is the county, so.
We're not. And if we do decide to do something later, it's gonna have to be.
Do we have?
They just have a lot more knowledge than what we have on this.
Yeah, do we have to put a statement in that says that for the septic uh, systems that they will follow the county ordinances? Does it already say that, that that, not in the, not in the part that we have to put in, but somewhere else?
Yeah, it's in it's in fifteen ten.
Okay, and that and that's still in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Didn't leave it in the trial county, which is what the health department was calling before.
Yeah. So those two paragraphs, those were. Um, what was in, but and we were supposed to reinsert them?
Just fifteen eleven.
Yes.
Just fifteen eleven.
The only issue is fifteen eleven.
Okay.
You're comfortable making a decision now, Denise?
Yeah.
Randy?
Yes.
Now. All right, does anybody wanna make a motion? To reinstate that as it reads at this point, Carl? Buddy? All right, we know no motion made, um, this is gets. Left as it is until. We should decide to look at that again.
I'd just like to comment, and I think it's an important thing for us to stay aware of, and if there are areas where we can improve. Regulations about affecting water quality, we should do it. But I do know that this big issue is coming up, and if I hear a lot about it, about septic tank inspections, which is probably an even bigger issue as far as. The fact that if you, that's sounds like that's something in the next six months or so. And what's happened, and I understood from Daryl Nelson, was that. The the state of Michigan is looking at those regulations statewide, but if a county adopts it. Then they would defer to the county regulations, so it's better for the county to be proactive, write their own regulations. Rather than live with whatever the state comes up with.
So so, um. I think if we're if we're gonna say that we're following, that you have to meet the Grand Traverse minimum standards, then maybe we need to just make sure that our definitions are the same. First for um, subsurface and septic fields as for Grand Traverse County.
Yeah, so we wanna, do we have a definition in our definitions?
Uh, yeah, and make sure that it's conforms with.
But.
With these guys.
Do you know what our definition is? Right, okay, all right.
All right, meaning that that business is closed. And next meeting is April second. One P M.
There's one thing of new business, right? The the we need to come up with more dates. Oh, sorry.
Yeah, and then. Anyway, let's do the. Meeting.
Okay. Let's check our calendars, what did we uh, propose last night?
Uh, they were hoping that we'd get somewhere in May, there's a lot going on, it's a bunch of it right now, and we could. Push that off to May sometime, that would be testing for.
So so I can't do anything with the R O S until after this joint meeting, right?
Yes, you can.
Oh, I thought we were waiting for direction from.
No, we're waiting on direction for them and what to do in the R O S. We need to structure the R O S.
Okay.
Get people. Board, you know, so we can vote on the board and put them on and and uh, and then we'll give them direction as. Because we have some stuff to do for them now, but we don't need to wait for the board for.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah.
I think we threw out the third and the tenth, is that what we did?
Yeah, and neither of those will work.
And they want Mark May, right?
Yeah, we need to push it out.
With me first? What were you looking at? We're we're looking at Thursday.
I can't be May first.
Okay.
And I'll be here in Florida. And I will be back the next week.
You're talking about the joint meeting? They didn't.
Could be the.
Do you do you want it on Thursday night only?
For some reason, we have Thursdays.
Yeah, I did, stayed to work. Well, I think there's other things going on on Thursday that happens to be the more open night.
Generally speaking, yeah.
Yeah, it is, mine are all open, so.
Yeah. So.
So eight fifteenth, twenty second, any of those three.
You wanna do the eighth or the fifteenth?
Uh, we'd probably need to give them a couple.
We should, yeah.
Do you wanna give them through, I think the twenty seconds getting too close to. Memorial Day?
Oh, yeah, it is, the the twenty sixth is Memorial.
The eighth and fifteenth.
Eighth and fifteenth.
Carol, eighth and the fifteenth?
Of May.
Of May?
May.
There's, okay with you guys?
Yeah.
All right, let's get that.
At seven or six thirty?
Um, probably seven.
Seven.
Deb brought this up, she said, you you know, would you consider like a Saturday? Which I didn't really love, but.
I think we're pretty good on that one, okay, oh, May fifteenth, was that one of the dates?
Yes.
I'll be gone. Okay, I hate to do that to somebody, yeah, if we put on, give them the trace of the twenty second, maybe they'll think that the eighth looks really good. And then uh, we'll have to check. And then uh, we'll have to chip at the uh, two new. Um, commissioners.
Yes, when uh, when are they gonna get signed in?
That'll be as soon as, after today, we, we do a lot of create the confusion of having. Extra members here.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Great. All right, uh, any public comment? No? All right, is there anybody left on Zoom? Here's Wendy.
Yeah, no.
Would you like to make a cut, public comment on Zoom?
I don't think so. She can't hear us.
You could chat.
No, I can't.
Again, on Zoom again, um. Microphones were not working today.
Yeah.
Just what I pointed right out, that, that was when the town board discussed the selection of a planner, um, it's. Came down to suggesting that. That myself and uh, and Keith look at the uh, response that we have and, and perhaps do that interview with somebody. And make a decision, make a recommendation to the town board. If anyone else wants to see what we got back, I'd be able to go, sure.
All right, no public comment, uh, making motion, uh, like the entertaining motion, adjourn. Oh, wait a minute.
Are you making the motion?
Well, all business, uh. I need to. Look into the. And I spent a whole weekend just frustrating myself. With a very limited computer knowledge, I just can't do that. I will wish I could. There's some things I can help with. But I, I just don't have the computer skills and uh. Yeah, I hate to admit that.
Well, we have two new members coming on, so maybe we'll uh, give them list their help.
Somebody run copies, run errands, uh, I can investigate some things on the web, but like, I tried to get. A copy of the. Signed ordinances and what I did, I don't even insist and said we could pay fifty or eighty dollars, but then I don't know which one of ours.
This is not on the agenda for today, so we can't really.
But I, I just.
I understand what you're saying and. Sorry, no, it's okay, I can understand.
Yeah, I understand. I had, that's what we talked.
So I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
All favor? Hi, any opposed?
So who seconded?
Carol.
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 Well, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Hopefully at this point.
So, how do I? How do I turn this? Just exit.
Okay, go to um, yes, first stop recording.